Good evening, council members. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. And at workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. The agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. Please note that the City Council Workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council workshop video is available on the city's website. Following the Healthy Washington roadmap to recovery to the COVID-19 crisis, the City Council will continue to hold virtual workshops until Open Public Meeting Act restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for the items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or the city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. And once again, as a tradition, we'd like to just make it aware that we're using our masks, social distancing, hand sanitizers, and keeping our areas clean to maintain a healthy workplace and to protect one another from spreading this virus. And I'd just like to share real quick that, you know, we'd like to put an emphasis on COVID-19 fatigue. You know, although it's been a while and, you know, perhaps some restaurants are starting to open up and things are starting to move again, but we just really want to emphasize on maintaining those critical steps to stay safe. We'll have some more report a little bit on some vaccines and where we're at with that. But with that, I appreciate everybody for being here tonight. And with that, well, can I ask for a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Present.
Maloney?
Here.
Milney?
Present.
Present.
Roach?
Councilwoman Roach?
I knew she was here.
Yeah, she was just here. Maybe there's technical difficulties. So I know she was just here and I'm sure she'll come back on, so let's just go ahead to the next, please.
Councilmember Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas?
She's excused tonight.
And Mayor Martinez?
And here. So thank you for that. May we all rise for the flag, please? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Roach, was that you?
Yes, that was me. Sorry. It just wasn't unmuting for me, but I needed to.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So next, we'll move right along. We have proclamations and acknowledgements. And today, we do have one. We have a special student from Pasco, Chihuahua High School, if I'm not mistaken, who sent me an email. And she is from FCC LA. And I think she's on the line and she'll explain a little bit more about it. But I'd like to just thank Brissa Hernandez for her efforts and her leadership in this area. And we would like to make a proclamation tonight. And I will read it and then afterwards, we'll have Brissa Hernandez, hopefully, and maybe some others that would like to speak on this issue to share some words. So tonight, we have a Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America proclamation, February 8th through 12th, 2021, which reads, "Whereas Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America (FCCLA), the national nonprofit, family-focused, inter-curricular student organization for family and consumer sciences, students through grade 12, helps youth assume their roles in society through family and consumer sciences education in the areas of personal growth, family life, college readiness, career exploration, leadership, and community involvement. And whereas, the organization extends classroom learning through chapter service projects that develop leadership and employability skills and helps young men and women learn how to plan, make decisions, and carry out evaluation programs of actions through working with other youth and adults within their school, community, and state. And whereas FCC LA offers members an opportunity to work together for common purposes for the improvement of themselves, as well as their families, careers, and communities. And now therefore, I Sol Martinez, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim February 8th through February 12th as Career, Family, and Community Leaders of America Week." So with that, do we have Brissa Hernandez on the line tonight?
Yes, I am here.
Well, good evening, Brissa. And we are honored to have you here tonight and want to thank you for your leadership and what you provide to our students and our community. What would you like to, would you like to share some words about FCC LA?
Yes, just to go into depth about what FCC LA is. It's a student-led nonprofit organization that currently has over 180,000 members across the nation and impacts millions of people every single year through our service efforts. We have some other students on the call tonight that will hopefully be able to share their testimonies. I've personally been in FCC LA since sixth grade. And I started off as a shy student, didn't really know what path I wanted to go into for my future. But through FCC LA, I've held multiple leadership positions. And I've competed in competitive events that have allowed me to gain the leadership skills that I have today. Last year, I served as a national officer. So I was one of 10 students that served on the National Executive Council for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. I was a National Vice President of Development. And that opportunity has allowed me to connect with members in Washington DC and at the Capitol in Olympia. And I'm just here to say that FCC LA is an awesome organization. If there are any parents watching tonight, make sure that your student hears about it and decides to start participating in this amazing organization that will change their lives. It'll allow you to travel. It'll allow you to compete and really find what career pathway is best suited for you. So I'm hoping that if anybody from either McLaughlin Middle School or Pasco High School or from my school, Chihuahua, that would like to share their own testimony about FCC LA and its impact, I'd be happy for you to share that as well. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Well, you're welcome. And thank you for your leadership. You sound like a vibrant young lady and it sounds like this program has been very beneficial to you. And I actually remember this when I was in school. And I remember a lot of great things coming out of this program. So I can associate with what you're talking about. Is there somebody else on the line that would like to share some words? Or a testimony that you would like to share?
Hi, I'm Justine Rodriguez. I also attend Chihuahua High School. It's also my fourth year. And it's only been my fourth year in FCC LA. I joined my freshman year. I can also say this organization has changed so much for me. Not only in my career path and figuring out what I really want to do, which I feel like is an obstacle a lot of teenagers in high schools face, but also with just learning like life skills, for example, public speaking. And I was not a great public speaker when I started out, but now, I mean, I have to speak publicly and present my findings and research. And I feel like that's one life skill that everyone should learn. And there's many other ones. Kind of the first one that came to my head. There's a lot of research, time management skills. Honestly, this organization has helped me in so much, not only in figuring out my career path, but also just life skills in general, what I will use in everyday life.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for coming on and sharing your testimony tonight. Is there one more person that would like to give some words tonight? If not, then any council members, would you like to share anything about FCC LA tonight if you would like? Okay. So with that, Brissa Hernandez, thank you very much once again. We will definitely keep you in our thoughts and encourage all the parents and folks to keep FCC LA as an option for their children to be able to improve their skills. So thank you very much. Have a great evening. Next, we will go to verbal reports from council members. Was there any council members that would like to report anything for the past week? I know that... Councilwoman Roach, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Okay, I just wanted to share a little bit. I actually spent some time and came in contact with, and I know you have been working very diligently on this. And I don't know if you were going to wait till miscellaneous items or not, Councilwoman Roach. But I spent some time, I contacted some people from the school district, also the Chamber from Pasco to talk about support for the Martin Luther King Community Center. And I got some positive responses. And hopefully, many of them have signed up onto the letter that was developed by you. And I don't know if somebody else was involved in producing that letter, but was actively working to get that out so that we can get some support there for the Martin Luther King Center. Do you have any comments?
Sure. It would, thank you for your help in getting that letter around to community members. I think it is a great opportunity we have this year to meet the request that we heard through 2020 through our community engagement process from residents of Pasco that they wanted more community center space. And while Pasco, City of Pasco still has a, you know, has the intent and it's part of our city goals to pursue a new site for our brand-new community center, the one that, you know, we sold back, I don't know. Mayor, you probably know when we sold the senior center. I can't remember. But we sold it back to the school district. And, you know, since then, we've been on the lookout. But this is an opportunity to repair an existing community center and expand that one. And so I guess what people need to know is that our ninth district and sixteenth district legislators, none of them live in Pasco. So none of them really know the concerns and the needs or have done the community engagement that we have. And so essentially, what we're doing with this letter is letting those ninth and sixteenth legislators know that the people of Pasco and the overall Tri-Cities community really want, you know, this funding for the MLK Community Center because it's expanding. We have growing needs. And so we just got to be the squeaky wheel. So if you could get it signed by other people who care or want to support the MLK Community Center, that'd be great.
All right. Well, thank you for that and your efforts going into there. Also, I just wanted to announce that we did get a letter of appreciation and a thank you letter from Lagos Michael Landry for the proclamation that we made last week as well. So that's to you, council members. Any other council members like to report anything real quick? All right. And then we'll move right along to our item for discussion tonight. We have an item to discuss, to establish a council committee to review city boards and commissions, applications, and interview candidates. City Deputy Adam Lincoln, would you like to lead us off with that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. So there are five boards and commissions that have some version of vacancies. And I'll quickly go through those. The Code Enforcement Board has received three applications and has two vacancies. One of those members is an incumbent that's reapplied per a resolution of the city number 3388. An incumbent would have to be interviewed again before they can be reappointed. The next one is the Joint Housing Authority. We've received one application for one vacancy due to term expiration. The incumbent has reapplied and does not need to be interviewed for this reappointment. The next one is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We've received four applications for two vacancies due to term expirations. Both incumbents have reapplied. The next one's the Planning Commission. We've received two applications for two vacancies, one due to term expiration and one due to resignation. And the last one is the Downtown Pasco Development Authority Board. We have four vacancies, excuse me, four applications for five vacancies. Only one incumbent has reapplied and we are still actively seeking applicants for this board. And I believe we'd be looking for two members of the council to assist the mayor in the recruitment status or the recruitment.
Thank you, Deputy Adam Lincoln. So with that, council members, as you can see, there's not really that much, that many applicants or applications to go through. But I would ask for your assistance. I need, I would need at least two volunteers to help me with this process, to form a subcommittee as we have in the past. So what I would, I would be able to, I would entertain whether you guys want to just email me if you guys could assist. And our clerk would provide us the documents and information we need to study before we make our decisions. But I would like to ask for two volunteers to help me with this in the next week or two so we can select people to come and interview in a following meeting. Would anybody be available to do that?
This is Councilmember Alvarado. I would love to help.
Okay, we got one volunteer?
And this is Councilman Milney.
Okay.
This is Councilman Milney. I could help as well if needed.
Okay.
Serrano, I'm happy to help too. If we could get that list from Mr. Lincoln of how many applicants? I mean, are you thinking that, Mayor, that you would want two people for all of these or various people on various boards? What are you thinking?
No, we're thinking at this time, with the amount that actually have to be, of the applications going through, we're searching just for two people to do them all at this point. I think we can get through them pretty quick. We don't need to have two separate ones like we did last time.
Okay. Yeah, I'm still happy to participate. So, you know.
So I've heard three people so far. And what I think I'll do is, unless anybody else speaks up, I'll send you an email and request your assistance within the next day or two. And I'll, and then I'll get with the clerk and let him know who that, who those will be in our subcommittee. Is that okay?
Good for me.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for that, council. So next, we're going to go to miscellaneous council discussion. Deputy Adam Lincoln, would you like to start off?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, we've got a couple of items. The first one to talk about with you all is the Ask Pasco app, which is now live. Our communications director, John Funfar, sent out a great news release this morning. You can get this app through the App Store for your Apple devices or from the Google Play Store if that's your phone of choice. Or you can get it from pasco-wa.gov/askpasco. The app does a whole lot for us now. It really helps us with putting a good foot forward for our customer service. If you want to report things like potholes or graffiti, you can do so. If you have questions of the city, want to see what jobs are available, report non-emergency things just in general to the city. This is a great new tool for folks to use. Also, if your phone is in Spanish, you can use the app. It will automatically translate to Spanish for you as well, which we think is a really positive feature of this new device. So we hope people will go on the App Store and take a look. And it's really user-friendly. But that's the first big item. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments that you want to add to that.
Thank you for that.
And the next thing was going to be an update from our very own Chief Gear, who's been spending a lot of time helping our community and along with his team to help with the vaccination site, along with, still heavily involved with our testing site here at CBC. So I don't know if Chief Gear is on, if he could provide a brief update, please?
Chief Gear, are you on the line tonight?
I am, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, I can really appreciate all, I can really appreciate all the makeup you put on during those public safety announcements. You're looking great out there. So what can you tell us tonight?
Well, we, you know, we continue to vaccinate. We're getting 3,900 vaccinations this week, the same as last week. The number continues to be a problem. We could, we can easily do, well, not easily, but I know we can do 10,000 vaccinations a week at this site. Our site has done more vaccinations than any of the other three sites in the state. So we're just standing by, hoping to see more vaccinations. It's going well there. I don't have much to complain. I am going to actually get a few days off. Neil Hines, a deputy chief from Kennewick, is going to relieve me for a little while so I can get back and try and do my regular day job at Pasco as fire chief. Although there's a lot of discussion at a state level about how to staff all these mass vaccination sites and other things. So it's very, it's very, very interesting working through this. But overall, the mass vac site is going well. I do have concerns about testing. If you look at the metric for testing, it's not, the numbers are not extrapolated out per 100,000 population. And it's based purely on the percentage of people that test, that test negative, or excuse me, test positive. And at this point, we're running about 500 tests a day average, or maybe a little under that, where we used to run seven to eight hundred average through the site. And I'm afraid that a lot of what's showing up at the testing site are people that are sick or that think they're going to be sick. And that's causing our, it's going to make it tough to meet that metric. So we're working with the health department on that message and see what we can get out of that to try and change that metric around and get our number of positives down. The only way to do it honestly is to either test more people or quit testing. So we'll have to see what happens with that. So I guess with that, if there's any questions, a council that I can answer.
Well, thank you, Chief Gear. Again, thank you for all your efforts and all the work you're putting in there. Council, do you have any questions or comments for Chief Gear? If not, that is a pretty unique situation we're in with not as many people testing. And yeah, hopefully, we can, we can come to an agreement. I know that there's three of the four metrics that we have to, the numbers we have to meet to go into the next phase. And yeah, it's very critical that we try to achieve that, to open up some of our businesses and at least get into that next phase. So once again, thank you for that, Chief Gear, and looking forward to hearing some good news here in the near future. So thank you.
Well, good, good news would be 10,000 vaccines a week.
And I guess, Chief Gear, for those who have already taken their vaccines, I'm not quite sure, do they get an automatic appointment to get their second vaccine? Or how does that work?
I, we've just been learning that as well. And we, we know that we can send an email out to people to remind them to schedule themselves for their second vaccine, but they do not get an automatic appointment. Again, we're having to learn a lot about the state health system and how all this stuff works and what's set up. And unfortunately, what's really frustrating is this phase that we're in is a demographic that is not real computer literate or doesn't have computers or smartphones. And contacting those people is a struggle to help them get their second appointment. And that is a topic of discussion every day with the team on how we try and notify people to make their second appointment. I personally got two emails today from individuals that tested with us in the last couple of weeks. I don't know how they got my email address at work, asking how to schedule. And so I'm trying to help those people. And it's very concerning to all of us that are trying to make this work on how we get those people in for their second vaccination.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information. And again, I would encourage everyone to go to the Benton Franklin Health District webpage and do whatever it takes to get in and try to get vaccinated if you wish and desire to do that. So once again, thank you, Chief Gear.
And Mayor, they do, they need to go to the PrepMod site where they do their initial registration. We release the numbers for the next week at about 3:30 on Friday afternoon. And that's what I'm telling people. So get onto that PrepMod registration site at about 3:30 and just keep watching it for the numbers to come out for the next week and try and get a registration in. They don't need to be right on their 21 days at their Pfizer or their 28 days at their Moderna. It's good to be two days before, two days after, but they can actually be up to six weeks after their original first vaccination before they receive their booster.
Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you for that, Chief Gear.
Mr. Mayor, can I, if I may ask Chief Gear a quick question?
Yes. Councilmember Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you. So Chief Gear, so I noticed a lot of social media traffic late last week of, "Come down right now. We've got people ready to put shots in arms." Can you tell me a little bit more about how that's going? Are we, we're not, we're not wasting any vaccines? We're getting people showing up and we're able to process people through everything just fine? Can you talk a little bit about that?
We have not wasted a vaccine in two weeks. The wild card in the Pfizer vaccine is we get somewhere from five to seven vaccines out of each vial of Pfizer vaccine. So as we draw those vaccines out, they're only good for six hours maximum. So we can't draw all of them right away. So we start drawing them out about eight, so that we can make the first rush and then draw some more out during the day so that we have vaccines up to about 4:30 without any of those vaccines going bad. We have on any given day, a low of 5% of the people that don't show up that have reservations or appointments and to 10%. So we don't know till we get close to the end of the day, two things. Number one, how many Pfizer vaccines we're going to have? We released 800 spots, which is technically what we should have with the number of vials that we draw out each morning. But we end up with anywhere from about 875 to 910 vaccinations out of Pfizer. So we have to, we do that holding line and make sure that people understand that it's not a guarantee they're going to get a vaccine. But we want to have people ready to go. And unfortunately, they have to wait sometimes for hours. But we want to get every vaccine we have in arms. And not knowing how many vaccines we're going to get each day out of those Pfizer vials is, it's a real moving target each afternoon.
I'm glad to hear we can get more out there than expected because that's, that's, that's great news. That's more people getting vaccinated. Do you have, do you have any thoughts as to, like, when someone's asking, like, do I go wait? When should I show up? What's that next action I should take if I don't have an appointment? Do you have any, any thoughts on that, Rick? Share?
If they can't get an appointment, if they absolutely don't have any ability to get an appointment, then either through working with their kids or a friend or someone that can navigate the system, then right now, unfortunately, their only alternative is to try and get in the holding line, get there. We open up, technically open up the holding line after about 1 o'clock in the afternoon when we know how many, most people show up early and then trying to, and then trying to track the no-shows during the day. And we have people, we know there's people that make multiple appointments and then go to the first one they could get in. So like I said, we run a 5 to 10% on any given day, no-shows. And we don't know that till later in the afternoon, how many no, actual no-shows we're going to have. So it's not as simple, you hear some sites that say, well, we scheduled 200 people, 200 showed up, it's done. When we're scheduling 800-plus people, the margin of error increases in there. And when we're drawing out of 800 vials, the percentage of number additional vials or, excuse me, additional vaccines we're going to get changes. And it changes every day, even though we draw consistently out of 800 vials. Or, excuse me, the equivalent of 800 vaccines, not 800 vials, the equivalent of 800 vaccines. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's an all-afternoon process to try and balance that out and make sure that we get, that we do not waste a single vaccine.
So for members of the public, the key is if they're going to show up and if they don't have an appointment, it would be show up on the list of authorized people to get a vaccine and show up in the afternoon. it would be show up on the list of authorized people to get a vaccine and show up in the afternoon and, and understand that, just be patient. I know our, our team, your team, the team, is doing the best they can. So I know I'm really proud of everything I've seen and just the fact that not a single vaccine dose has been wasted over two weeks with all of the moving parts, all the different team members, all the different requirements and, and changes that you're, y'all are going through. I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm just thrilled and impressed that you were able to adapt so well to it. So I'm just, I'm deeply proud of, of all the efforts and, so, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's, it's been an interesting assignment.
All right. Well, with that, have a great evening, Chief Gear, and thank you for all your efforts. So now, next we'll...
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. So next, we, we'll go to the next item, and that's for executive session. And we do have an executive session tonight.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't know that was the last call for miscellaneous. Is it okay if I bring something up?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Councilwoman Roach.
I apologize. I just wanted to bring something to the attention of city council and to staff. There was something that I had read about that took place in Florida last week on Friday. A person or a group, I, I'm not, I don't think it's known yet, was able to gain control of a city in Florida's industrial control system. They gained access to the computer and, and altered, you know, the, the water treatment facilities, the chemical balance. And so there was an employee who was watching, who literally watched the hacker gain access and remove, move the cursor on the computer and, and watched them change those controls. And thankfully, that that employee was on, on duty, watching, and prevented something catastrophic from happening. But, you know, I know that this is something pretty prevalent everywhere is that cybersecurity is not taken as seriously as it should be. And so just wanted to read this as a wake-up call for us as a city to make sure to do a, you know, a check on our own systems. Oftentimes, you know, when you see something like this happen in one place, people tend to wanna copycat it and to make sure that our cyber, our IT department, that our industrial controls have that same sort of cybersecurity in place that wouldn't allow for something, somebody or some group to gain access like this. And so just wanna make sure that we scrutinize city staff for, for the good of the city of Pasco and its residents. And I see Mr. Worley came on, so hopefully, that means he's gonna be able to speak to it a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Mr. Worley, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Great. Councilmember Roach, you bring up a very good point. And we heard that very same thing and got notice of that same information. And we're gonna look into it. One of the things that I can assure you is that several of the projects that were recently upgraded at both of our water treatment plants and our wastewater treatment plant was a new SCADA system that allows us to be able to monitor all of the items that go on in our treatment plants, all of the systems, all of the valving, all of the chemical controls and all of that kind of stuff. And so we have the, the latest and greatest information now. And I think we are very well protected, but given that new information, we're gonna double-check that to make sure that we don't find ourselves in the same situation. So thank you for bringing that up. We wanna make sure that our systems are safe from that same thing happening.
Awesome. That's exactly what I wanted to, to know and bring to attention. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach and Director Worley. Yeah, those things are very important, and it's always good to talk about them and discuss them and making sure that we're on top of things and try to prevent those things from happening. All right. So if there's no one else, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. The council will now adjourn into executive session for approximately sixty minutes to consider acquisition of real estate per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-ten B and to discuss litigation or legal risk of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussions of the litigation or legal risk is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency per RCW forty-two thirty one-ten I triple I. The meeting will be attended by the deputy city manager, administrative and community services director, and the city attorney. So it is now seven-thirty-five, and we'll be back in sixty minutes. So with that, I will ask the council to go ahead and get into the executive session meeting, and we'll see you in a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have come back but we will need an extension to our executive session for an additional 15 minutes. So we will reconvene in the executive session and come back in 15 minutes. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attention tonight. The executive session is now terminated. It is 8:48 and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.